Okay, can you hear me now? Okay. I will be serving as the hearing chairperson. Thank you for attending this virtual public hearing. Other project team members that will be participating include Brian Lipke, Project Manager, the Wisconsin Department of Transportation, Charlie Webb, the Jacobs Project Manager, and several other Brown County and Wisconsin DOT staff who will be monitoring email and phone calls to answer questions and help people provide verbal testimony. This virtual public hearing will end when all interested persons have provided testimony or at 8:00 PM, whichever occurs first. We will be providing contact information throughout the virtual public hearing, so please have paper and pencil ready to write things down. ... website and in the public hearing packet found on the project website as well. If you prefer not to or cannot view the virtual public hearing through YouTube Live, you may use the "listen only" line we have established for this virtual public hearing by calling (920) 385-5851, conference ID (919) 594-83- pound sign. To get the most accurate accounting of those participating in the virtual public hearing, we ask that you send an email to south.Bridge conector at browncountyWI.gov which includes your name, address, including city, state, zip code, phone number, and if applicable, if you are representing yourself, someone else, or a group. Please note that the information provided, including names, addresses, phone numbers, and email addresses, is not confidential and may be subject to disclosure upon request pursuant to the requirements of the Wisconsin Oprah Buckards Law Sections 19.31 to 19.39 of the Wisconsin statutes. Before proceeding further, I would like to introduce the court reporters, Christine Whitevin and Carrie Bor, who are taking down these proceedings for the official public hearing record and recording your public and private verbal testimony. If you would like to obtain a copy of the transcript of this public hearing, you should make the request through the information we provide on the project website and in the public hearing packet found on the project website as well. Materials presented tonight and other information to assist you in forming comments and testimony about the proposed project, including public hearing exhibits, public hearing packet, the Tier 1 draft environmental impact statement, presentation slides, and project contact information are also available on the website and by request. This virtual public hearing is being recorded for the official project record. The virtual public hearing recording will be posted on the WIS YouTube page and a link will be included on the project website. If you do not have access to the project website and would like to obtain a copy of specific portions of this virtual public hearing or other project materials, please contact me, Cole Rungy, at south.Bridge conector at browncountyWI.gov or at (920) 448-6480. Two options are available tonight for you to provide verbal testimony. The first option is private verbal testimony. The second option is to provide public verbal testimony through YouTube Live. Both options will be recorded by a court reporter. We will be using a callback process for you to provide either private verbal testimony or public verbal testimony through YouTube Live. Those wishing to provide private verbal testimony may do so at any time during this virtual public hearing. For those wishing to provide public verbal testimony through YouTube Live, this opportunity will begin following the project statement being read into the record. To get placed into the callback queue to provide testimony in either manner, please call (920) 492-7705 or send an email to south.Bridge conector at browncountyWI.gov. A call taker will take your name, address, and a callback phone number. If we are experiencing high call volumes, a call taker may not immediately be available to take your information. Please hold on the line and we will answer your call in the order received. If sending an email, please indicate whether you are interested in providing either private or public verbal testimony. Participants will be called back when it is your turn to provide either private or public verbal testimony based on the order in which the request was received. Please be patient when waiting for your callback. Each person providing either style of verbal testimony is limited to three minutes, but this is the first time we are using the callback process and we do not know if the number of people interested in providing testimony in either manner. When you receive the callback, please provide your name and address. You may also indicate if you are representing a business organization. Then proceed with your testimony. Also, when you get your callback for either type of testimony, please turn off the audio on your computer. There is up to a 30-second timeline between your phone testimony and what is broadcast over YouTube Live coming back out of your computer audio, which will cause confusion for all parties. When providing verbal testimony, the YouTube Live presentation audio coming through your speaker will make it difficult for the court reporter to understand your testimony. In addition to the verbal testimony options during this virtual public hearing, you may provide additional written or oral testimony for the public hearing record via email to south.Bridge conector at browncountyWI.gov by sending the comment form in the public hearing packet or a letter to Cole Rungy, Interim Planning Director/NPO Director, Brown County, PO Box 23600, Green Bay, Wisconsin, 54305-3600. You may also call me, Cole Rungy, at (920) 448-6480 and I will provide a written summary of your call for entry into the public hearing record. Written testimony will be accepted if it is postmarked and oral testimony will be accepted if received no later than August 3, 2020. I will summarize the contact information just provided before we begin accepting public verbal YouTube Live testimony. There will also be another opportunity to hear about the project and present testimony during the in-person public hearing being held tomorrow from 3:00 PM to 8:00 PM at the Brown County Fairgrounds located at 1500 Fort Howard Avenue in DePere. I will now proceed with the opening statement. This virtual public hearing is being conducted on behalf of Brown County, the Wisconsin Department of Transportation, and the Federal Highway Administration as part of the comprehensive consideration of the location and environmental aspects of the proposed improvement of the South Bridge Connector from the intersection of County Trunks Highway EB and F in the town of Lawrence to the intersection of County Trunk Highways GV and X in the town of Ledgview in Brown County, Wisconsin. The objective of this virtual public hearing is to give you full opportunity to express your opinions about the location and environmental aspects of the proposal. You may also present questions as part of your testimony for Brown County's, the department's, and the Federal Highway Administration's consideration as the total concept of the proposal is reviewed prior to arriving at a decision. If you have questions about any aspect of this proposal, you may call or email me, Cole Rungy, Interim Planning Director of Brown County, at the contact provided in the handout or on the website. I emphasize that this public hearing has the basic purpose of getting the most complete expression of public opinion and your individual viewpoints on record so that they can be considered along with all other judgments and opinions to be reviewed by Brown County, the department, and the Federal Highway Administration before further decisions are made. We will now proceed with the project presentation and brief general question-and-answer session. Following that, we will have the official notice of public hearing and other articles entered into the record. The court reporter will continue transcription during the project presentation. Following the presentation, a brief general question-and-answer session will be conducted using only email or the chat function of YouTube Live. The phone number used for requesting a callback to provide public and private verbal testimony may not be used to ask questions. We will read your email or chat question and the project team will provide an answer. The purpose of the question-and-answer session following the presentation is to assist the public in preparing your formal testimony and will not be part of the official public hearing record. Statement made in the chat window or via email will not be read to the group. Please remember that statements intended for the record should be provided through public verbal YouTube Live testimony or private verbal testimony to a court reporter tonight. You may also provide written or additional oral testimony for the public hearing record via email to south.Bridge conector at browncountyWI.gov by sending the comment form in the public hearing packet found on the project website or a letter to Cole Rungy at Brown County, PO Box 23600, Green Bay, Wisconsin, 54305-3600. You may also call me at (920) 448-6480 and I will provide a written summary of your call for entry into the public hearing record. Written testimony will be accepted if it is postmarked and oral testimony will be accepted if received no later than August 3, 2020. And don't forget about the opportunity to present testimony during the in-person public hearing being held tomorrow from 3:00 PM to 8:00 PM at the Brown County Fairgrounds, which is located at 1500 Fort Howard Avenue in DePere. So, we can start the presentation.
Thank you for participating in the public hearing for the South Bridge Connector project. The purpose of this public hearing is to provide information and receive comments on the South Bridge Connector Tier 1 draft environmental impact statement prepared by Brown County, WISDOT, and the Federal Highway Administration. A public hearing is a more formal event than a public involvement meeting and is required by law. All public testimony is recorded by a court reporter and entered into the record. The Tier 1 draft EIS was signed on June 12, 2020 and a notice of availability was published in the Federal Register on June 19, 2020. This presentation will describe the background of the project, the preferred alternative and the reason it was identified, the public hearing process, and next steps for the project. Project Background. The project is located in the southern part of the Green Bay metro area in the city of DePere, town of Lawrence, town of Ledgview, and town of Rockland. The concept of a new bridge across the Fox River was first envisioned in a Brown County plan in 1968. In 1996, Brown County's long-range plan recommended the general location of what was referred to as the Southern Bridge. In 2008, Brown County began preparing an environmental impact statement. This process involved extensive input from the public and local governments to document the purpose of and need for the project. Brown County also worked closely with WISDOT and the Federal Highway Administration as well as state and federal resource agencies like the Wisconsin DNR and the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency. Some of the alternatives that were developed and analyzed included a new interchange with I-41. For that reason, the Federal Highway Administration asked that Brown County and WISDOT analyze how a new interchange on I-41 could affect traffic operations on the freeway. The EIS process was paused in 2012 while this analysis, called a preliminary engineering and operational review, took place. The EIS process resumed in 2019 in the form of a Tier 1 EIS. The Federal Highway Administration recommended that the study transition to a Tier 1 EIS since funding is not immediately available for the entire project. A Tier 1 EIS is a broad-scale document that analyzes broad corridors and conceptual transportation improvements rather than detailed alignments. For this project, a 500-foot-wide corridor is evaluated for each alternative. That does not mean that a new roadway would be 500 feet wide. Rather, it means somewhere in that 500-foot-wide corridor, a new roadway would be located. The roadway itself would be between 125 and 150 feet wide. This provides an indication of potential impacts that may be associated with the proposed alternatives, but it is not a detailed analysis of impacts because the exact location of the roadway has not been determined yet. A Tier 1 EIS generalizes on previously developed information to assess impacts rather than extensive data collection out in the field as part of this process. Lastly, a Tier 1 EIS does not directly result in construction. A Tier 2 environmental analysis is required. This could be the form of an environmental assessment or environmental impact statement required before construction would begin. This Tier 1 EIS utilizes a lot of the work completed by Brown County during development of the draft EIS between 2008 and 2012. The purpose of the project is to address existing east-west transportation demand as well as demand that will be generated by planned development in the southern portion of the Green Bay metro area. The project is needed in order to address four different issues: addressing congestion in the vicinity of the existing Fox River bridges, namely the Claude Alway Bridge and the Highway 172 Bridge; to accommodate existing and planned land use and future travel demand generated by planned development; to reduce travel time by improving east-west connectivity; and to address higher-than-average crash rates and safety issues near the Claude Alway Bridge and Highway 172 Bridge. Section 1 of the Tier 1 environmental impact statement documents the purpose of and need for the project in more detail. The lead agencies developed and analyzed a wide range of alternatives. A three-step process was used to identify the preferred alternative. In step 1, the alternatives were developed and then analyzed to see how they would address the project's purpose and need statement that it talked about in the previous slide. The initial range of alternatives considered were the no-build alternative, improving existing roads, 11 different corridors/routes for a new road, the transportation system management alternative, and the transportation demand management alternative. Some of these alternatives were eliminated from consideration at step 1 and others were carried forward to step 2. In step 2, the remaining alternatives were evaluated against nine objectives that Brown County had developed in close coordination with the public and local governments. Several alternatives were dropped in this step. Chapter 2 of the EIS describes the reasons for dropping alternatives in more detail. I will note that alternative routes 6 through 11 were dropped from consideration because they were determined to be too far south of where existing and planned development is expected to occur. They would not draw enough traffic off of the Claude Alway Bridge to provide effective congestion relief. Three alternatives were carried forward into step 3 and evaluated in the Tier 1 EIS: the no-build alternative, corridor alternative 1, and corridor alternative 2. All throughout this process, input from the public, tribes, local officials, and regulatory agencies were considered. This exhibit shows the location of the 11 different corridors that were evaluated for a new roadway. This exhibit shows the location of corridor alternative 1 and corridor alternative 2. Corridor alternative 1 is depicted by the red line. It would follow Heritage Road and Shering Road. Heritage Road, or County X, is a two-lane road that would be widened to four lanes. A new bridge would be built across the Fox River and Shering Road, or County F, would be widened as well to four in an area near Interstate 41, potentially even to six lanes. Corridor alternative 2 is depicted by the blue line. It would also be a four-lane roadway with a new bridge across the Fox River. Part of corridor alternative 2 would follow existing roads: Rockland Road, Red Maple Road, and South Bridge Road; and part of corridor alternative 2 would be built on new alignment where there is no road today. Corridor alternative 2 would involve building a new interchange with Interstate 41 about a mile south of the County F or Shering Road interchange. A collector-distributor road may be built along Interstate 41 between the new interchange and the Shering Road/County F interchange under corridor alternative 2. Preferred Alternatives. Lead agencies have identified corridor alternative 2, which would follow Rockland Road, Red Maple Road, and South Bridge Road with a new interchange with I-41 as the preferred alternative. Corridor alternative 2 was identified as the preferred alternative because it would provide the best solution for addressing long-term mobility needs and safety concerns while most effectively serving existing and planned development and balancing impacts to socioeconomic and environmental resources. Corridor alternative 2 would reduce travel time in the Green Bay area more than corridor alternative 1 would. There would be less congestion along Shering Road and Heritage Road and especially at the Shering Road interchange under corridor alternative 2. Corridor alternative 2 would be safer than corridor alternative 1 mostly because it'd have fewer driveways and crossroads connecting to it. Several studies have shown that the more driveways and other connections to a roadway increases the potential for crashes. Corridor alternative 2 was deemed most compatible with land use plans. On the next slide, I'll talk about the socioeconomic impacts and natural-environmental impacts of both alternatives. This table summarizes the impacts of corridor alternative 1 and corridor alternative 2. Chapter 3 of the EIS presents this information in more detail. Impacts in the EIS and in this table are presented as a range. That is because the EIS is evaluating corridors rather than specific alignments. In terms of residential property acquisition, corridor alternative 1 would require property to be purchased from between 45 to 75 residential properties. Corridor alternative 2 would require property acquisition from between 16 and 25 residential properties. In terms of actually displacing or relocating homes, corridor alternative 2 would require between 10 and 16 homes to be relocated, whereas corridor alternative 1 would require between 4 and 6 homes to be relocated. Corridor alternative 2 would have a higher impact on agricultural land compared to corridor alternative 1, but also have modestly higher impacts to cultural resources and parks. Corridor alternative 1 could affect more sensitive noise receptors than corridor alternative 2. Sensitive noise receptors are things like homes, schools, and daycares. Corridor alternative 2 would also have a higher impact on streams in terms of more stream crossings as well as a higher impact on wetlands than corridor alternative 1. Corridor alternative 1 would cross more floodplains than corridor alternative 2 unless the collector-distributor road option is implemented as part of corridor alternative 2, then it would cross five floodplains rather than four under corridor alternative 1. In terms of protected species, both alternatives could have similar impact. As part of the traffic analysis for the Tier 1 EIS, the lead agencies estimated the traffic volumes that would be carried by corridor alternative 1 and by corridor alternative 2 on several area roadways. This exhibit is presented in the EIS if you'd like to pour over in more detail. It is Exhibit 2-16. You will note near the top middle of the page at Main Avenue and the Claude Alway Bridge where it crosses the Fox River, under the no-build alternative, which would be no new bridge crossing, the Claude Alway Bridge would carry 44,000 cars per day, which would result in the level service E traffic conditions, again on that scale of A to F. Under corridor alternative 1 and 2, a lot of that traffic would be diverted to the new bridge and the Claude Alway Bridge would operate at an acceptable level service B or C. The Public Hearing Process. The hearing handout provides a complete project statement and additional details on project background, purpose and need for the project, alternatives, the impact of the alternatives, and exhibits on display. The project statement was read into the record and transcribed by the court reporter prior to the beginning of this public hearing. To provide testimony, you may provide verbal testimony or written testimony. If you choose to make a public verbal testimony, you may make a statement which will be heard by the public and recorded by a court reporter. You may choose to speak yourself or have your statement read aloud. Your name and if appropriate, your affiliation will be announced. For private verbal testimony, you may make a statement privately to a court reporter rather than heard by the public. Written testimony may be used in addition to or in place of verbal testimony. You may complete the comment form at the end of the hearing packet, write letters using your own stationery, or submit via email. Additional verbal and written comments on the Tier 1 draft environmental impact statement will be accepted if received or postmarked by August 3, 2020. Comments can be sent to Cole Rungy Collins can be sent to Cole Runge at the Brown County Planning Commission, P.O., Box Two Three Six Zero Zero, Green Bay, Wisconsin, Five Four Three Zero Five, Dash Three Six Zero Zero. Cole Runge's phone number is nine two zero four four eight six four eight zero, or emails may be sent to south.bridge connector at browncountywi.gov. Next steps. As I noted a moment ago, the comment period will end on August 3. By October 2020, the lead agencies anticipate signature of the Tier One final EIS and Record of Decision. The Record of Decision will identify the selected alternative for the project. Although I noted that Corridor Alternative Two has been identified as the preferred alternative, only after reviewing all the input received during the public comment period will the lead agencies actually select an alternative to move forward with. Tier Two studies can begin following completion of the Tier One final EIS and Record of Decision. And if the Tier One final EIS and Record of Decision select a corridor alternative, WISDOT's I-41 study, which is going on right now, could serve as the Tier Two study for the South Bridge Connector related improvements needed at I-41. Other sections can move into Tier Two studies as the lead agencies identify funding.
Now to briefly run through the displays that are available on the project website and will be on display at the in-person public hearing. This first exhibit shows the project history, which was talked about during the presentation, as well as the timeline and development for this Tier One EIS. This display lists the project purpose and need, which was discussed during the presentation. The purpose and need is also written in the public hearing handout available on the project website. Here we have the environmental process, which proceeds from a Tier One draft EIS to the Tier One final EIS and Record of Decision, which is anticipated later this year. Following the Record of Decision, Tier Two environmental and design studies will begin. This exhibit displays traffic counts collected in 2015 or 2018, depending on location, and projected traffic volumes for the planning horizon year 2045 within the study area. Existing traffic volumes show that drivers currently experience congestion on the existing Fox River bridges, and this congestion is expected to worsen in the future. This exhibit displays crash rates in the study area and compares them to the statewide average. The boxes outlined in red represent locations where crash rates are higher than the statewide average for that type of roadway. The next three exhibits display the alternative screening process. This process was explained in greater detail during the presentation and is also included in the public hearing handout. The first step shown here was to develop and screen the alternatives based on the project's purpose and need. After the first screening step, eleven alternative routes remained. In the second step of the screening process, the lead agencies assessed the eleven alternative routes retained and screened them based on how each route met the needs-based screening criteria and whether major environmental impacts could result. The image at the bottom shows the four routes that remained after step two. This exhibit describes the third step in the alternative screening process and the criteria used. This step resulted in two corridor alternatives, along with the no-build alternative retained for detail evaluation in the EIS. Throughout all three steps in the alternative screening process, the lead agencies considered the input of the public, tribes, agencies, and local governments. This exhibit explains the corridor width and working alignments the lead agencies developed to estimate impacts for the Tier One study. In subsequent Tier Two studies, the roadway alignment and width would be adjusted to reduce impacts to the extent practicable. Here we show the average daily traffic volumes and level of service in the year 2045 for each corridor alternative. For example, Corridor Alternative One would carry about thirty-one thousand vehicles per day on its new bridge over the Fox River in 2045, while Corridor Alternative Two would carry about twenty-five thousand vehicles per day. This exhibit was discussed in greater detail during the presentation. This exhibit provides an estimate of key impacts from Corridor Alternative One and Corridor Alternative Two, both with and without the collector-distributor option. The presentation further explains these potential socioeconomic and environmental impacts, as well as the impact analysis. Here we show the location of residential areas adjacent to each of the corridor alternatives. These are not areas of impacts, but rather types and locations of residences in the corridors. This exhibit shows the potential agricultural impacts for each of the corridor alternatives. The area shaded in green for Corridor Alternative One and yellow for Corridor Alternative Two represent the areas potentially impacted. As discussed in the presentation, the lead agencies identified Corridor Alternative Two as the preferred alternative. This exhibit further discusses the reasons for this choice and the advantages of Corridor Alternative Two over Corridor Alternative One. It's anticipated that the project will be a four-lane divided roadway with a median, similar to the reconstructed county GV, which is shown here. A shared use path or sidewalk will also be included in the project. The decision on a specific roadway cross-section will be further developed and evaluated during the Tier Two process. This provides an example schedule for the South Bridge Connector through the Tier Two process and construction. The project is anticipated to be built in sections; however, this timing may change based on availability of funds. This exhibit shows the environmental and community features for Corridor Alternative One, along with the working alignment. It does not show impacts, but just provides an overview of resources in the corridor. This exhibit calls out wetlands and waterways, along with community features such as schools, parks, and churches. Similar to the last exhibit, this one shows the environmental and community features for Corridor Alternative Two, providing an overview of resources in the area. All of the exhibits that were displayed here are available for review in greater detail
This concludes the presentation. The court reporter will now discontinue transcription during the general question and answer session. Transcription will resume when the information for the record is presented. The time for questions and answers will be limited, so we have adequate time to take public verbal YouTube live testimony. Do we have any questions?
No questions at the moment. I'd suggest Mr. Chairperson, we wait a moment or two to see if we get any questions before we proceed to the next step.
Yes, we'll wait for a second and find out if anybody has any questions before proceeding.
Who would the gentleman who spoke first, remotely? I have to know who took what as the speaker. Don't keep repeating that long.
Oh, me.
You were coming through the...
It was pre-recorded.
Oh, well, see, I don't know that, so...
Any questions currently in the queue? Okay, hearing none. This concludes the general question and answer session. We will now continue by entering information into the record. The court reporter should now begin recording again, please. I now ask Charlie Webb to present the information for the record.
Thank you, Mr. Chairperson. I would like to enter several articles into the record. In addition to the testimony provided at this virtual public hearing, all exhibits, handouts, presentations, and displays for viewing during this virtual public hearing will be included in the official public hearing record. Page sixteen of the public hearing handout packet, found on the project website, contains a complete list of these materials. Other materials you wish to provide, along with other testimony received after this virtual public hearing, and testimony received during and after the in-person public hearing, will be added to the official public hearing record, provided they are received or postmarked prior to the end of the environmental document availability period, which is August 3, 2020. The environmental document for this project proposal has been made available to the public and is available on the website for your review. Mr. Chairperson, I request that the published public hearing notice, environmental document, brochures, and the hearing handout packet, which contains a description of all exhibits, handouts, audiovisual presentations, and displays for viewing during this virtual public hearing, be entered into the record as exhibits.
It is so ordered. Thank you, Charlie. The project presentation given earlier serves as the extended version of the project statement. In addition, the detailed project statement is included in the hearing handout packet, which is available for review on the project website. A summary of the project statement has also been read and transcribed into the record by the court reporter shortly before the beginning of the virtual public hearing. We will begin taking verbal public testimony, YouTube live testimony shortly. As a reminder, there are two options available tonight for participants to provide verbal testimony: a public option and a private option. To get placed into the callback queue to provide testimony in either manner, please call nine two oh four nine two seven seven zero five, and a call taker will take your name, address, and a callback phone number. If we are experiencing high call volumes, please hold on the line, and we will answer your call in the order received. You may also send an email to south.bridge connector at browncountywi.gov, indicating whether you are interested in providing private testimony or public testimony. Participants will be called back when it is your turn to provide either private or public verbal testimony, based on the order in which the request was received. Please be patient when waiting for your callback. Each person providing either style of verbal testimony is limited to three minutes. When you receive the callback, provide your name and address. You may also indicate if you are representing someone or a group. Then proceed with your testimony. It is important to also remember to turn off the audio on your computer when it is your turn to provide testimony. Questions asked while participants are providing testimony will not be answered. Testimony will only be halted if the chairperson believes the project team needs additional clarification to understand the testimony being presented. We will now begin receiving YouTube Live public verbal testimony. When you are called, I will introduce you, but please also state your name and address. Also, you may indicate if you are representing yourself, someone else, or a group if desired. We ask that you please limit your verbal testimony to three minutes. This will allow everyone an opportunity to present their testimony. If you wish to provide additional testimony, please call our call takers once more and indicate your desire for another callback to provide additional testimony. Once everyone has had an opportunity to present verbal testimony, we will call you back to provide additional testimony if time allows. Remember that you may also provide written or additional oral testimony for the public hearing record via email to south.bridge connector at browncountywi.gov by sending the comment form in the public hearing packet found on the project website or a letter to Cole Runge at Brown County, P.O., Box Two Three Six Zero Zero, Green Bay, Wisconsin, Five Four Three Oh Five, Dash Three Six Zero Zero. You may also call me at nine two oh four four eight six four eight zero, and I will provide written summary of your call for entry into the public hearing record. Written testimony will be accepted if it is postmarked, and oral testimony will be accepted if received no later than August 3, 2020. Well, I now call on the...we'll begin the presentation of the YouTube Live public verbal testimony, and let's see who we have in the queue. Okay. Currently, we have nobody in the queue for public verbal testimony, and if anybody would like to get in the queue, I encourage you to do so now.
Is my computer showing on the...I'm going to edit the slide to put the phone number on there. The phone number is already being shown.
If you'd like to provide testimony, don't forget to call 920... Just a second. You can testify by either calling or... south.bridge.k connector@browncountywi.gov. Yeah, you are recording. All right, we currently don't have anyone in the queue for the virtual public hearing, so we'll allow five more minutes for anyone who would like to testify during the virtual public hearing.
Question that was submitted, this is not testimony. This is a question that was submitted, so I'll answer it, but this will not be transcribed. The question asks if there will be significant noise impact to the Remington Ridge condos in close proximity to Rockon Road and County Highway GV. The noise analysis would be completed during a Tier Two study that would quantify where a noise impact would occur or would not occur. We haven't done that now because we don't know the specific alignment of the roadway. Rather, we're looking at broad corridors. So in a Tier Two study, a detailed noise analysis would be done, and we'd be able to tell people the existing noise level at their residence is this, and, you know, if the project were built, it would be a certain decibel level. And then we can determine whether that would be an impact or not. So that's, in short, we cannot give a detailed answer to that question right now.
Okay, we've reached the end of our five-minute period. We currently have nobody in the queue to provide public verbal testimony. So thank you for taking the time to be a part of this virtual public hearing. The taking of YouTube Live public testimony is now formally concluded. We will be accepting private verbal testimony until 8 o'clock PM. At that time, the virtual public hearing will be adjourned.